Good evening, everybody. This is the planning board on June, Monday, the 13th, May 2024. Just we're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance. So I'm gonna ask everybody to stand up.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Just to be everybody aware, we are recording this and it has been transmitted via cable, is it? I don't know, but it may be. I think they're on there.
Yeah, we see eighty-six is recording.
Thank you. If anybody wants to record, just let us know. Otherwise, we'll start the meeting. Can I have somebody here? Number three, please. You're gonna open it up?
Yeah.
Do you want me to?
Yes, please.
All right. Public hearing notice is hereby given pursuant to an order of remand from the Worcester Superior Court. Yarush, is that right? J dated April ninth, two thousand twenty-four, in Copart of Connecticut, Inc. versus Planning Board of the Town of Warren, case number two-one-eight-five-CV-oh-one-three-five-three, that the Town of Warren Planning Board will hold a public remand hearing on Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand, two thousand twenty-four, at seven fifteen PM at the Shepherd Municipal Building, forty-eight High Street, High Street Selectman's Meeting Room on the special permit and site plan approval applications filed by Copart Connecticut, Inc. One-four-one-five, one-four-eight-five Dallas Parkway Suite 300, Dallas, Texas. The applications proposed an extension of the pre-existing non-conforming automobile junkyard slash salvage yard use, which includes storage of junk slash scrap vehicles and parts within the various parcels shown on the plans submitted by Copart of Connecticut, Inc. and located at six hundred Old West Warren Road, Warren, Mass. The land is shown on assessors map fifteen dash zero dash fifty-two and fifteen dash zero dash fifty-four and fifteen dash zero dash forty-seven and fifteen dash zero dash forty-seven point one and sixteen dash zero dash three and sixteen dash zero dash four and sixteen dash zero dash seven. The owner of said property is Copart of Connecticut, Inc. The Planning Board previously voted to grant the applications with conditions of approval. This decision was filed with the town clerk on December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one pursuant to an agreement between Copart of Connecticut, Inc. and the Town of Warren. In accordance with the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty A, Section seventeen, the Planning Board has agreed to hold a further public hearing on the applications for the purpose of issuing an amended decision. Said public hearing is being held in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty A, Section seventeen, and the requirements of the Town of Warren zoning bylaw. Copies of the applications and related documents are on file in the Planning Board office and may be reviewed during regular Planning Board business hours. Anyone interested in or wishing to hear should appear at the time and place designated above. All interested parties are invited to attend, and that is it.
So the public hearing is open. We're gonna vote.
Chairman.
Yes? Who is this?
Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is Dave McKay, Special Town Counsel. I'm happy to give the board just a brief overview of how we got to where we are, if that's at all helpful. I think the board is fairly familiar with the matter, but to the extent that's helpful, I'm happy to do that. I would also like to note for the applicant that we had some email discussions off the record with respect to the board reaching a quorum this evening and the fact that there were, that there are only four voting members as opposed to a full planning board for this evening. And my understanding is the applicant would like to move forward with the hearing, recognizing that that's gonna require four votes. But it's worth getting that on the record in advance. And again, to the extent the board would find it helpful, I'm happy to give the board just a quick overview of how we got to where we are.
Yes, please, if you may.
Sure. So, uh, as was just referenced a moment ago, this is a remand on a two thousand twenty-one decision of the Planning Board for a special permit for the Copart facility in Warren. The board had granted the special permit, subject to a variety of different conditions, and the applicant subsequently filed an appeal of that decision, not so much appealing the decision itself, which granted the special permit, but appealing several of the conditions that were contained in the decision. Those related to the days and hours of operation, the days and hours of construction, groundwater monitoring, and stormwater basins and stormwater monitoring for the property. That led to a series of negotiations with Council for Copart as well as some additional peer review, specifically with respect to the groundwater monitoring and a set of revised conditions for the project as well as a specific set of annual groundwater monitoring requirements for the property. Those were reviewed by the town and the board in executive session. And there was also, in connection with those revised changes or proposed changes to the permit, town, Special Town Counsel negotiated a comprehensive settlement agreement. And that settlement agreement was subsequently adopted by the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, the next step in the settlement agreement process. And I should mention that the, as part of executive sessions with the boards and reviewing the settlement agreement, both the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board reviewed the proposed modifications that had been negotiated with, or between Council for the town and Council for the applicant. We brought those forward, as I mentioned, in a settlement agreement. Attached to the settlement agreement, which you should have, is a proposed amended decision that includes the revised permit conditions that were negotiated between the applicant and the town as well as a specific set of baseline and annual groundwater monitoring, protocols that would be put in place with the adoption of this amended decision. And then the settlement agreement also includes with it a stipulation of dismissal that if the board adopts the amended decision and there's no appeal taken of the amended decision, that that stipulation gets filed with the court, and that would formally end the litigation. So part of the settlement agreement, in order to get this revised, or I should say amended decision in front of the board, required us to go to the court and obtain a remand so that the jurisdiction for this particular permit would be transferred back from the Superior Court to this board. And that is the purpose for which we are here tonight, for the board to consider and review, to the extent necessary, the amended, um, the amended special permit and the amended decision.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope. Okay.
Yeah, I don't have any questions or comments.
I don't have any questions. I think we should move to a vote.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we move to the vote, is the applicant here in the room? It looks like they are.
They are.
Yes.
We are.
Okay. I just wanna confirm that you do wanna move forward with a four-member vote tonight?
Uh, good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is David Burson, David Dufresne, Attorney at Law. We are prepared to move forward this evening. We did, we were fortunate to be able to get Patrick here from Copart as well. So we are here and we are ready to move forward. And thank you very much for having us and making this happen tonight for us. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, David. I, I didn't mean to suggest that you shouldn't move forward tonight, but you've got the right to a five-member board if you wanted one. So I wanted to give you that opportunity.
We certainly understand the, the quorum requirements and the voting requirements and are happy to be moving forward this evening with four members.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay.
So what's our motion? To accept the amended decision for special permit number whatever, site plan whatever? Is that basically the format, David?
The, the motion would be to approve the amended decision in the form attached as exhibit B to the settlement agreement. And then what would formally happen, Mr. Ihacker, from there is we would fill in, you'll see in the, in the draft that's attached to the settlement agreement, there are a variety of details that need to get filled in. For example, the date of the hearing, the date that notice was published, some particulars like that. We would finalize that, give that to the board. The board members can sign it at their convenience, at their earliest convenience, and then it gets filed with the town board.
So do we have to do a motion to close the public hearing first and then a vote?
Actually, that is correct. You would do it that way.
There's, there's a comment, potential comment.
Somebody in the, um, Zoom have a comment?
You have to unmute.
Well, you have to, are you taking questions? Did you open it up to questions yet?
Um, I did not. Should we open it, right?
It's up to you. You can.
So we, we opened the, uh, the hearing for any questions? Sir, I, I think you're, you're muted. We can't hear you.
It's John Fidgel? He's muted.
There you go.
There he goes. All right.
That's better. Is this the time for comments and concerns? Is this time for questions? Or, I mean, are there, are there open for comments and concerns after the guys have voted? When, when is the time to appropriately ask questions?
Well.
Isn't now?
If you have questions about what we're talking about, I guess that would be now. If you just have general comments, that would be later in the meeting.
No, this is comments about what's going on here.
Yeah. Now, that would be now.
Okay. Okay. Are you going to read the proposed settlement? Or are you just gonna sign it and vote on it as, as you guys see fit? How, how is this gonna happen? You get, you ready to vote on this now?
Yes.
We can't see a copy of it before you do this? Okay. Um, I'm just concerned about all the, the money that's been spent for engineers, environmentalists, attorney's fees, when this could have been settled, I think, a long, long time ago. I'm very disappointed in the way that the board handled the, the meetings. Every time these guys came up to back, you throw more curveballs at them. We gotta do this, you gotta widen the driveway, you gotta take the neighbors' lawn up, you gotta... It was just, it was unnecessary. It was unnecessary. The, the hours of operation are not gonna change because they've not operated this since two thousand ten. Why, why? Because they wanna have an expansion and expand their business. Do you wanna now set hours? Do you guys now want to have? When I put that driveway in quite, almost twenty years ago, I was not allowed to widen that driveway. I was not allowed to take that back and get out of there. It was a sinning growth. Then all of a sudden, you guys come in and now you wanna do this, you wanna disturb the neighbor's yard, you wanna do this. This was all in the order of conditions. How many orders of conditions do they have in front of them right now to meet your needs? That's what I, one thing I was, I was like, it was like fifty something last time I checked, before the Copart took this all to, uh, to, uh, to court. How many orders of conditions are there now?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Yeah.
Don't, don't you think that's a little insane? I, I mean, are they still gonna widen the driveway? And they're still gonna take that mountain out and all that kind of stuff? Because they want to expand a quarter of a mile away from that driveway? You, you think that's, that's the right thing to do?
So these were already all negotiated with Copart? So this, this was already pre-negotiated?
Trying to do what you guys want, and I understand that. But every time, there was, throughout the meetings since two thousand twenty-one, there's been more and more and more and more and more that you guys are asking these people, how much money has spent, been spent in attorney's fees and engineers and everything throughout this whole process? And what is the settlement? Do you have to reimburse Copart for their attorney's fees because, because of all this? What, what's, what's the settlement agreement? I wanna be, I wanna know what's going on with this settlement agreement. I wanna know how it was presented.
A copy can be viewed in the Planning Board office when it's completed? So.
Not before that. Once you guys hammer the gavel down, there's nothing that any of the taxpayers can say or do about this, right?
I'm not sure they could anyway. Because, because the, um, the public hearing was closed and then they appealed, and then it ends up between the two parties. So I don't think.
Gets remanded back. So it was between attorneys.
At that point.
So if I may, David Burson here on behalf of Copart, I just wanna state for, for the record, and we do appreciate that the town had, was representing their own interest during the process, and we don't have any issues with the proposed settlement agreement as it currently stands. You know, as previously mentioned, the majority of those provisions which were changed were primarily related to the environmental monitoring and the stormwater as well as the hours of operation. We're satisfied with the, the conditions as they, they currently read.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Chairman, I'll. We did. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I'll add, I'll add that the settlement agreement was, uh, it was negotiated with counsel, but it's also been a public record since the settlement agreement was adopted and signed by the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. So that has been available for public review and comment for, well, at least several weeks now since we moved the court for a remand to bring this matter back to the Planning Board.
May I speak again, sir?
Yes, sir.
Well, when we requested the documents, we were unable to obtain them, being that it wasn't a settled dispute yet, and we could not obtain the proposed settlement. We could not obtain that through the town clerk. We, we requested the documents.
When were they requested?
Yeah, when did it?
At what point?
Three weeks ago, four weeks ago?
Ooh, I don't know if, I don't remember.
And we got letters back from the town clerk stating that they could not give us a copy because it wasn't a settled matter.
She may not have had copies to give you, I guess would be my answer.
No, she said you wouldn't provide it.
Yeah, she said you guys wouldn't provide the, the documentation to the proposed settlement.
Okay, I don't, I'm not sure. If you'd gone to the Planning Board, then it would have been there. I don't, but Lori would not.
We were reverting to the town clerk.
The town clerk said she provided what you provided.
Yeah, she, she gave us what you guys provided to us, and the proposed settlement was not a hearsay package. And there's, we have emails back and forth that said that we were not getting them until it was settled matter. They're public information.
Mr. Chairman, I, I can't speak to what the town clerk said, but it wouldn't be unusual for this. The decision wouldn't get filed. The settlement agreement itself wouldn't get filed with the town clerk typically, just because it was agreed to by the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, and the decision itself wouldn't get filed with the town clerk until the board actually votes and adopts it, and it gets signed by the Planning Board and then filed with the town clerk. If it's helpful, I can speak to what the negotiations were and the revised conditions, at least in principle. They were fairly straightforward. But those were really the nature of the negotiations between the town and Copart as this matter went forward. And I think Copart is accurate in saying that the, the primary issue in, um, in the negotiations between the parties was the groundwater monitoring and the environmental conditions of the permit. Copart has indicated that they're agreeable to the conditions as, and up to this point, town has been as well as those conditions were revised.
Okay, I just think it, it was a long, lengthy process that was really unnecessary to, to drag Copart through all this to be able to expand the business that's already operational. I think this could have been handled in a lot more timely manner as opposed to the way it went down and having to, to, to go with litigation and, and spend more money on attorneys and, and everybody. I just don't understand the amount of money that could possibly have been spent over the past three or four years to, to, to... Copart's not gonna do anything wrong. They're nationwide, they're, they're worldwide. They're, they're not out to, to stomp on feet. They're, they're, I, I just don't, I, it, it seems like it's the same way anytime any business is proposed in town. Somehow or another, it gets stomped out, it's too much money, it's too much this, it's too much that. It, it, this, this board is not welcoming new businesses in town. I haven't seen one business, a new business in town. That's, it's just, it's just too much. And I was on the Zoom meetings with them back during COVID when, when we were talking about a hot dog stand not needing a, a, uh, a vehicle monitoring system to see how much traffic impact is gonna... And, and we've been over all this, and it just, it just doesn't seem to sink in. It's, they're overreaching, they're, they're, they're overstepping their, their, their bounds to allow new businesses in town. And it's really discouraging to someone who wants to open a business in town because they're not welcoming people in. And it's just, it's, I think this could have been handled within a year realistically. Sit down with them, have a meeting, have a, have a, a meeting behind closed doors and hash the thing out, not drag it out for four years maybe. If this was a new business coming into town, they would have been long gone. They would have found it balmer or rare or somewhere else. Don't put up a business not in Warren if they were not reestablished here. It is, it's just too much. It's too much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on?
Yeah.
Moving on?
So I think we can move on now.
Okay.
Vote to close.
Is that the next step?
Yep. A little motion to close the public hearing?
And then vote on the, okay. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing regarding the order of remand from the Worcester Superior Court regarding Town of War, or, um, Copart versus Town of Warren planning.
Second it?
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
David Dufresne, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Okay.
Public hearing has been closed. So now we move in.
No input at this point?
Right.
So now we move into our voting section?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the amended decision and settlement agreement that are attached to the minutes, I guess, is what we'd say, right? David, is that?
Yeah, I think it would be a motion to approve the amended decision and grant the special permit and site plan approval as attached, in the form attached as exhibit B to the settlement agreement. I think that's your motion, Mr. Ihacker.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
David Dufresne, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richi Harker, aye.
Motion passes. You're all set?
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Your, you, you had four votes there?
We have four votes.
Okay, I didn't hear the fourth vote, I apologize.
Yeah.
Yep.
Four votes.
Great.
You can do it again if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, since I'm off on my own firm now, I figured that the very least should update my...
Oh, you broke out on your own, huh?
I did, I did. I took the lead.
Really? You're like your own?
You took the lead now?
I took the lead. I, I'm off on my own now, so.
Wow.
Wow.
Very good.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
It's the opposite, though.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
All right. Thanks.
Take care, guys.
Mr. Chairman, unless you need me for anything else, I'll sign off this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Goodbye.
Bye, folks. Have a great evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have comments and concerns. You guys have any comments or concerns?
I have a comment. ZBT has sent a letter stating that they don't have to let us know who is, um, I can't remember exactly what. They're, they're supposed to let us know who to call in emergency and the police and all that. And they said, I believe we received this notice in error. It appears that filing an annual O and M report is required in the most current zoning bylaw. Not a requirement under the zoning bylaw under which this project was permitted and approved. And as I understand it, the reason that we asked for this was for public safety in case there was an emergency. And it has nothing to do with, you know, it's just common courtesy to let people know who to call if some kids should get in your thing or if something happens and they're refusing to do this, you should have to do it.
All right. Well, we can look up the bylaw.
This is a letter, too. I don't know if you wanna see a letter that I sent out.
No, that's fine, yeah.
It's the same letter that was sent out last year.
Just make sure everything's up to date.
Yes, that's all. Up to date and also to let the, the Planning Board know, the police know, fire department know. Everything else.
Yeah, because if there's an emergency or anything, there's a fire or anything, the fire department needs to know who to contact.
Right.
Should we have?
If somebody's breaking into their property, the police need to know who's getting in there?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, so I, um, okay, twenty nineteen. Are they saying the twenty nineteen bylaws?
Yes. But the, this wasn't part of the bylaws. It was just something that we requested that people do for the health and safety of the town.
Didn't we put it in as a condition?
As a condition in the further ones.
No, but didn't we, okay, we didn't have it as a condition?
I don't think as, as in that. But I mean, this is just common sense.
Okay, so what did their reply say? Do you have that?
Yeah.
Because they're supposed to have it posted.
Yes.
Even for taxes, for everything.
Yes. But it's just like, this is, this is so petty.
It would be in their best interest.
Yes.
It's like, hey, hey, if there's something going on there, we need to know who to call.
Yeah.
So we can let them know.
Does this to Sarah?
No, yeah.
Save it. We took a picture of it.
But I don't know if, and I, does that letter say that if failure to comply, what the results are? Because I know we talked about that at one time. But I don't know if it'll.
Operator shall, I, this is from the 2019 bylaw. The operator shall identify a qualified local contact person who can provide assistance to local officials during an emergency, the ability to be on-site within two hours.
So it's there.
Operator shall update the contact information immediately and so notify Warren, Fire, and Police whenever there is a change.
It's not in the bylaw. It, it's in the conditions.
I don't.
But we have the bylaw, right?
That you're reading the bylaw.
Yep, I'm reading the 2019 bylaw.
They're claiming.
But they say they don't qualify for it.
Yeah, but the, what was there?
Oh, the application, the applicant shall file an operation and maintenance report annually with the planning board, no later than 45 days after the end of the calendar year. Confirming that the operation is ongoing has not been abandoned at the operation and maintenance plan is being followed. Failure to file the report within the required timeframe may be considered evidence that the facility has been abandoned and the planning board may take action described in sections 1211 and/or 1253. The court finds that the facility has been abandoned. Yeah, so I think.
You should add in there that the other part where it says that they require to identify a contact.
Yeah.
There is.
It is.
It says, please confirm the following, the operation is ongoing, the operation has not been abandoned, the operation and maintenance plan are being followed. Please submit the following information, physical address of solar site, current mailing address, email address, phone number, active emergency contact, who can be on-site within two hours should an emergency occur.
So I think what might be good is print out section 12 along with the cover page of the bylaw, highlight it, the things they need to do, and mail it back to them.
Just say we respect, respectfully request that you comply with this for the health and safety of the people that live in this town, period.
Who are these?
ZBT.
ZPP, ZPT.
Which project is in the map?
Coey Hill Road.
Coey Hill.
Was that on both sides of the road?
No, no, that's like Little Rest Road.
Oh, no, this is the whole here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. It's for the health and safety of the town. It does nothing.
And I'm good to email back that to them?
What?
Am I all right to reply to this email back to them or do you want me to mail it out?
What do you think?
I think email it first. Email is fine.
Yeah, you can email it. So just maybe print this out. Either, um, mark it up with a, if you can, a PDF or print it out.
Yeah, I can.
Scan it in.
They'll let me scan it with color, so.
If you have questions, uh, let me know tomorrow.
You can talk to Karen and scan it.
My scanner does in color.
Oh, yours does? Oh, okay.
Yeah. So I just think you want to go through this, and you have to do the 2019 bylaw, not the new one. And you should have a copy, otherwise I do.
Okay.
But basically kind of come through it and find, if you do a search on the word annually,
Yes.
that'll be a good start.
All right.
Right?
That works.
Pull out everything.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns?
I think I would add, I, we respectfully request that you do this for the health and safety of residents of the town.
All right, I wrote that. And then we're just waiting on the South Street and Cronin Road one.
Cronin.
Okay.
Cronin Road.
Three fifty-five.
It'd be interesting to see who owns Cronin Road now. Because it may not be Borrego anymore.
That was Borregos?
Yes, it may not be them anymore. That's why they wanted us to sign off, so they could sell it.
Yeah.
Um, I wonder if that's that AES distributed energy?
I don't know.
Uh, I finally, I send them out this way, so hopefully somebody gets.
You could also look on the assessor map and maybe just see.
Who has it now?
Yeah.
Who has it now?
I feel like I did do that too.
The assessors may have, are still current, right?
Yeah, I think they get updated like every six months or so.
Yeah, but now it should.
Okay. All right.
All right. Anything else, Drew?
Nope, that was mine.
David?
No.
Rich?
No.
Sarah?
Uh-uh, nope.
Do you want to talk about the, uh, getting, um, Adobe? The license for Adobe?
Sure.
PDF?
Yes.
Uh, in, in one of the meetings that we have with, uh, the, uh, town administrator and Sarah, at her review, she mentioned that it would be nice if you could, she could have a license for Adobe PDF to help her workflow.
Well, she has Adobe PDF through, well, no, she doesn't.
You need Acrobat, Adobe.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. That way when you upload things, it just straightens everything and looks way neater. If you need to do the Ctrl F to find something, you can find something.
One is just to read, it's like $12 a month or something, yeah?
Oh, you, um, you can't just buy it straight?
Yeah, you buy one year.
Uh, well, no, Adobe, everything is subscription now.
Yeah, it's not a software you can buy.
Photoshop, Bridge, uh, Acrobat, it's all monthly.
It's all online.
Or maybe a year.
There are no more softwares like this. You pay and then downloads.
And then you pay every month.
You stop paying, it doesn't work anymore.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, if you stop paying, they shut it off on you.
They kind of have you over a bit.
Well, one thing is.
Yeah, they figure it out.
One thing is, you pay for one license, you can put it into computers, so we may find another use, another user in, in the count.
There are other PDF editing programs too. I mean, even online, you can often upload it to a website and.
Yeah, they're just.
I, I, I.
Time consuming.
I said that.
Oh, I've had to use them because of my old job.
An user didn't, didn't like that idea either.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I mean, if you tried it and it didn't work, that's fine.
Yeah, one of you.
So we're going to have the new, the new IT service and maybe that's something that they can do for us.
Yeah, I just want to get Sarah to.
Because we require, we, we, you know, we require Adobe on certain computers. Maybe that's something that they can move in for us.
Okay.
As part of our subscription with them.
Yeah.
So we'll follow up on that. I haven't forgotten.
Okay, sounds good.
That's it. June first.
Yeah.
That's with both.
Yeah. You'll have your.
Ah, thank you.
All right.
You're a fiscal jury, David.
Yeah. You want to do payroll now?
Okay, uh, no more comments or concerns? We're good? So we're gonna move to payroll, bills, and budget.
Okay. I motion to approve O'Reilly, Talbot, and Oakham Associates invoices for lot three, the amount of $1,170. Lot four, in the amount of $288.75.
Do we have a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
David Dufresne, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Motion approved. Next?
Motion to approve, um, clerk payroll for weeks ending in, um, five four, 2024, and five eleven, 2024, in the amounts of $361.76 and $341.48.
Do we have a second?
Wait, wait, did you say three forty-one?
No, $340.48.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
David Dufresne, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Motion approved. Approve the minutes. Motion for approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve April 29, 2024 minute, um, meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Drew King, aye.
David Dufresne, aye?
Derek Bellis, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Minutes approved. When is our next meeting?
That would be, not the 27th.
10th. Oh, the 11th, was it the 11th?
Have to be the 10th.
10th.
June 10th.
10, yeah. And it's in there.
Motion to adjourn?